Are declared the motion passed. Dutiable Commodities Amendment Bill 2017.
Council now becomes committee of the whole committee to consider the Dutiable Commodities Amendment Bill 2017. Members may refer to the appendix to the script for the debate and voting arrangements for the bill. I would first deal with the clauses with no amendment. I now propose a question to you that the following clauses stand part of the bill. Clauses one to six. Does any member wish to speak? Mr. Yu Cieh Wang. Thank you Chairman. I'd like to offer my views on this bill as well as the views of the bills committee. According to a WHO report, alcohol is now the third major risk to health after smoking and hypertension. Alcohol is related to more than sixty diseases including hemorrhoids, some cancers, heart diseases, diabetes etc. The harms of drinking are not as well known as those of smoking especially for young people. And compared with adults, alcoholic beverages would harm young people even more especially to the brain. According to the WHO study, drinking is the single leading risk for deaths among those between fifteen and twenty-nine. For underage drinkers, they might lead to further drinking in adulthood. And they are more likely to continue to drink in the future. As such, the government is obliged to legislate to protect these underage persons. After the bill is enacted, I hope these goals can be achieved. First, build an awareness in the community on the correct way to drink according to studies. More and more young people are drinking and in two thousand and three, for those between fifteen and twenty-four, only twenty-eight point two percent of the people said they would occasionally or regularly drink. By two thousand and fourteen, the percentage increased to fifty-eight point three percent. The Department of Health conducted a health survey on Hong Kong people. And they found that the average age of drinking was twenty. And half the people started drinking before twenty. In the fifteen to seventeen bracket, thirty-five percent of males and twenty-five percent of females drink within a year. So the situation was much worse than a decade ago. The reason is that our young people do not know about the harms of drinking and drinking has become a trend. So through legislation, retailers should be banned from selling liquor to underage persons in order to convey the right message. And this way, parents would be more vigilant. Underage drinking can harm the body and mind. Retailers cannot sell liquor to underage persons. According to a survey, fifty-eight percent of the respondents often purchase liquor or alcoholic drinks in convenience stores and supermarkets. And apart from licensed premises, there is no restriction to the sale of alcoholic drinks to minors. And Hong Kong does not impose duty on wine. And there is a wealth of alcoholic products. And they are generally affordable. And there's no restriction on the sale of liquor to minors in outlets. So a lot of young people have ignored the harms of drinking. And it has become more and more trendy. So hopefully, this measure of exercise can stop the purchase of liquor through retail channels by minors. And there would be clear guidelines for the trade and contraventions would be criminal. And they would be punishable by fifty thousand dollars. And this way, the retail trade would be held liable. A lot of countries and places in the world have long imposed a total ban on liquor to minors. And the purchase of liquor must be accompanied by proof of identity regardless of age. So legislating to ban the sale of liquor to minors has become a trend. And it is also an obligation for operators. Operators would also be held liable with online shopping so popular nowadays. The sale of liquor might not necessarily take place in a physical store through telephone or websites. Such indirect sale has become more popular. And this involves some different issues. Apart from operators and salespersons, third-party delivery agents might be involved since the proof of identity should be required to prove that the buyer is aged eighteen or above. If the third-party deliverer is not the seller, it's unfair to put the responsibility on them. And execution is also difficult. That's why the government is moving an amendment to exclude third-party agents. And they would not be able to require proof of identity from the purchaser. So this would better protect the third parties and frontline staff. Mr. Yu Cieh Wang. This is about clauses one to six. In other words, those with no amendment. For those with amendments, you can wait until the latter parts. Can you speak on clauses one to six? I'd like to quote the discussions from the last meeting. In terms of legislation, prohibiting the sale of liquor to minors is the only solution. And on the long run, we have to instill the right attitude of drinking. Minors can still obtain liquor through other channels, for example, from their families and friends. We must build a consensus on the harms of liquor to minors. And this would help lower the percentage of drinking minors. So there should be moral education to encourage people to control drinking. This would be the best solution. Recently, the Department of Health came up with a campaign on alcohol-free youth. And through different stakeholders, for example, healthcare professionals and parents, they hope to discourage drinking among minors. And such publicity efforts are certainly very important. Apart from publicity education, the government should conduct regular assessments. And they should adjust enforcement actions accordingly. On the amendments, I would speak in a moment. Thank you. I would like to remind members that at the committee stage, our focus should be on clauses one to six standing part of the bill. Ms. Oden Chow, thank you. For the, while the main legislation is very straightforward, in view of global trends on the sale of liquor to minors, the government would impose further regulation. I'd like to offer some context first. For other countries around the world, especially European countries and the US, drinking is very common among young people. I lived in the UK for some time. And when I was young, students would often drink. And many of them would drink till they are really drunk. So in some countries, especially in the West, prohibition against some liquor is particularly stringent. As to whether such ban can achieve the means or achieve zero alcohol, if you have lived overseas, you would know that this is not the case. So if we want to rectify certain trends or situations, a right amount of regulation is warranted. In this bill, the debate is not on whether we should prohibit the sale or supply of liquor to minors. So the real debate might be on the subsequent amendments. So I would speak again during the amendments. So we can implement regulation, but we have to think about proportionality. If the offense is not serious and if you if the enforcement agencies enjoy too much power, this would be disproportionate. And this would harm our society. The amendments cover the entering of premises or homes. I would speak on that in a moment. So I'd like to thank members of the Bills Committee for offering their views over the course of discussions. When we consider regulation, we must also consider the feasibility of such regulation. And we don't want innocent parties to be affected. So at the committee stage, myself and other members have said that in the actual enforcement of the ordinance, we hope to only regulate liquor suppliers. But for people or parties only responsible for making deliveries upon receiving orders, we don't want these delivery persons, while if they are affected inadvertently because of the ordinance, it will be unfair. So for the committee stage amendments, I have said that we should legislate, but we should not affect innocent parties. The government promised that in their committee stage amendments, these delivery staff should not be regulated by the bill. So when we debated the bill, apart from legislative means, the ultimate solution might have to do with public education. We are now introducing a bill to introduce regulation. But as I said, there are certain acts or situations we want to control. And inevitably, we must legislate. But if we only resort to legal means to regulate and rectify all issues, it is not the right answer.
I believe public education is something I'd like to speak about in this session. We say people under eighteen should not consume alcohol. We can use this bill to regulate that this should not be so to them. But at the same time, we should tell them that if they take to binge drinking or that it has become a habit, they cannot kick. It will be bad for their person or their physical health. Frankly speaking, I think we should do some public education on this front. Chairman, please allow me to point out here that the present situation in Hong Kong is such that, well, yes, there are young people who take to binge drinking. But I stand to be corrected if you have the right data. My own observation is that compared to Western countries, including the UK and the US, what I can see is that our young people are quite different from those in the other countries vis-à-vis the way young people are drinking. My own experience is that in those countries, we have seen unruly behavior resulting from drunkenness. I'm citing this example, hoping that the Bureau has heard our view. Since we are legislating for regulating a certain situation, we actually see other countries where drunkenness is more serious. Hong Kong is still some way from those countries. When we legislate to provide for very severe details and if we overdo it and, as I was saying, if there is disproportionate regulation and bringing about too much nuisance, I would say this will bring about some negative impact to society. I'd like to point out clearly, therefore, that compared to places with serious drunkenness, we are still a distance away. But of course, we have to act according to the global trend and legislate for something. But please understand, don't try to overdo it. And don't make a piece of legislation that is clearly disproportionate. We should pay attention to this. Later on, there will be a CSA on inspection of domestic premises. I have grave reservations towards that. I believe there is the lack of proportionality. But I would reserve my remarks on that when it comes to that CSA. So I speak. Mr. Tommy Zheng. Chairman, I'd like to ask you. I'd like to speak on other CSAs at one go. Can I do it? No, because this is the committee stage and we are speaking on clauses one to six. After that, we'll come to clause seven to be moved by the SFH. But I might have to leave early. I believe you should try to stay here because we are only dealing with the first amendment. Chairman, I did not join the Bills Committee. But my constituents are in the catering trade and at convenience stores. When my constituents, like the bars, who apply for liquor licenses, they support this amendment for a simple reason. A convenience store may be opposite the road from a bar. The convenience store is not regulated when it sells liquor. But the bar is regulated, including about the sale of liquor to minors. And people can go to the convenience store to buy liquor and they drink on the streets. And then a bar is nearby. Residents will watch from upstairs and they see someone getting drunk. And this one may be a minor. When the bar applies for renewal of liquor license, the residents go and object. In the Hong Kong society, why are we treating people so differently? There is overregulation on one side and absolutely no regulation on the other. They do not need a license. They can sell liquor or alcohol twenty-four hours round the clock. Do you think that's fair? Not so, in my view. I would say, therefore, my constituents, especially those with a liquor license, support the amendment. Bars and the catering trade have always been seriously regulated. One of the regulations is that there should not be sale of intoxicating liquor to minors. And if someone is getting drunk and if you continue to sell liquor to that person, even if he is over eighteen, then the next time you apply for a renewal of the liquor license or in fact immediately, the police can apply for the revocation of an existing liquor license. We also receive complaints saying that people under eighteen are drinking liquor on the streets and they may disturb the public. But then they take the bars, my constituents, to task. However, those usually get the liquor from supermarkets or stores or convenience stores. But then all the problems have been dumped on the shoulders of my constituents. I dare not say that with the passing of the bill, these problems will not affect my constituents who are bars anymore. But over the years, we have been talking to the administration that there are loopholes in the law. And it's not fair to bars and the catering trade. Also, there is not enough protection for people under eighteen. I'm glad that the administration has heard us. The Amendment Bill, as it stands, is still a distance away from our proposal to introduce a liquor license on convenience stores and supermarkets so that they are at a par with licensed premises. But then, it has struck a balance between conveniencing business and regulation. But of course, there are pros and cons. Some bars have introduced vending machines so customers can buy their own liquor. If the bill is passed, this will be banned because there will be no sale of intoxicating liquor on vending machines. Some laws will be caused to the trade. I understand operationally, vending machines cannot stop from selling liquor to a certain category of people. But I understand only very few people in the trade use vending machines. I hope they understand and I hope they will pay attention that they should not use vending machines anymore when the bill is passed. Thank you. Mr. Ray Chan. Thank you. Chairman, we are debating the Dutiable Commodities Amendment Bill 2017, the main purpose of which is to put a stop to all channels to the sale and supply of intoxicating liquor to minors, including the prohibiting of sale from vending machines. It is a very special channel because the operator and the buyer are not in direct contact. So this is going to prohibit the sale from vending machines and because it's difficult to stop it from not selling to minors. Secondly, to prohibit the sale or supply of intoxicating liquor to minors in the course of business. And also, the paper talks about remote distribution. The seller or supplier must display or publish a prescribed notice that no sale would be done to minors. And the purchaser must declare that he himself is over eighteen years of age. Chairman, under this regulation, some of the new proposals may not really bar minors from buying liquor. Rather, some of them may be inadvertently trapped by the law. One of the proposals in the bill is that if it is done by remote distribution or the sale of liquor online, the seller must display a prescribed notice on the website saying that minors should not buy liquor. And it should receive a notice from the purchaser to declare and confirm that that person is not a minor before liquor can be sold. Are we going to achieve any effect from this proposal? As you know, if you go to a porn site, for example, it is a kind of honor system. You would click or check the box whether you are a minor or you are not a minor. If you say you are a minor, you will leave the site. But if you are not a minor, you can enter the site. According to the present regulation, sale of liquor websites will just have to display the prescribed notice that as long as the minor checks the box that he is not a minor, he can still go through the purchasing process. If the minor has his own supplementary credit card or he can use the principal card of his parents, he can still complete the purchase. At the Bills Committee, members asked why the regulation does not say that there should be a proof of identity displayed by the purchaser to the seller? The administration says that this would hinge upon privacy and cybersecurity. I would say if minors can still buy liquor online and when the liquor is delivered to his place, it's still possible for them to accept the delivery. Mr. Ray Chan, are you already speaking on the next amendment? We are talking about clauses one to six. I understand, Chairman. I'm saying that if you regulate sale online, I'm doubting its effectiveness. I understand in clause seven, we are going to talk about agents who would be liable, who would not be liable. If a courier company does not engage in the business, then there would not be any liability. But if it is a stakeholder of the company or if it is the seller himself, then there will be liability. We can go into that in the next part and whether it is reasonably practicable. But here, I just like to touch upon that. And in fact, there are many ways to accept delivery. Should you not allow the delivery at the management office? Or if I accept it on behalf of my father, should I present my father? Or should I present my own identity card to declare that I'm not a minor? These are technical issues that administration must attend to. Another regulation is about entry into domestic premises. Well, this again will be mentioned in the next part. The administration is saying some people may operate online shops to sell liquor at home. So it is possible for them to sell liquor to minors. Therefore, inspectors should be empowered to search domestic premises. I also have grave reservations about this, but I will speak in the next part and explain in detail. Today, I have heard many members from across the political spectrum who also say they have grave reservations. I'm afraid, Secretary, your CSA may not be endorsed. Okay, coming back to clauses with no amendment. The administration is adopting a multi-pronged approach to stop minors from drinking. But actually, you're not going to achieve much. One of the reasons is that the public don't really understand why minors cannot drink and what the grave impact is. I understand you are mounting a campaign. Some adults are encouraging minors to drink. This is not anything abnormal. According to the paper from the administration, forty-three point five percent of primary four to six students drank. And fifty-one point five percent of senior primary students got liquor from parents. I don't know whether they got permission or they just used the alcohol at home. While the parents did not exactly say yes or no. And only less than ten percent senior primary students bought liquor for consumption. This survey goes to show that only a minority of senior primary students bought liquor. But it doesn't tell us how many secondary or primary students were encouraged by parents or relatives or that they were condoned to drink.
If most students drink with the encouragement or connivance of their parents or adults, then this policy of banning the sale of liquor to minors, which which we have talked about so much, and also the fact that too much power is given to law enforcement agencies. So is there the proportionality that we would like to have? The government is of the position that drinking by minors is detrimental to their brain damage. That may be permanent brain damage if they drink. But to many adults and parents, they don't know this or they don't subscribe to this kind of of description of the impact. You know, the secret package required graphic photos of lesions on your on the food and so on and so forth. I would also always ask, why don't you do the same for the wine bottle? Wouldn't that be more constructive in conveying the message of harmful effects of drinking? But the government said in the bills committee that such a proposed amendment is irrelevant. But ultimately, no one proposed to move such an amendment. The government has refused to display a warning sign on the wine bottle. Well, it's really unreasonable. I've been talking about the need to do away the double standard. If we cannot do this through the current bill, and since you're saying that the harmful effects are so serious and you want to give law enforcement agencies so much power to enter domestic premises to collect evidence, to seize whatever they want to seize. But you are not, at the same time, conduct an effective public education campaign on the harmful effect of drinking. But we have been asking secrets and cigars to come with very graphic warnings, pictures and signs. Well, wine bottles are larger in comparison. Why don't we display a warning sign there? If the government is sincere in this warning, that is, no minor should drink, the harmful effects are serious, you want to ban vending machines and anyone delivering wine might be held liable. And you also want to allow law enforcement agencies to enter domestic premises to collect evidence on the strength of a warrant. So why don't you consider this a warning sign suggestion? Are we going to require fifty percent of the label service or eighty-five percent of labels to be devoted to the warning? That would mean adding cost to the manufacturer. And I think Mr. Tommy John would raise similar objections to that. Mr. John has complained that the bars are so rigorously regulated but not convenience stores. So it's better that both are regulated strictly. But we should start with public education. We should start with putting a warning sign on the bottle. So that when parents want to give their children some alcohol, they would know about the warning first. We cannot regulate online purchase, whatever we may want to do with the sales channel. But if the government really wants to prevent the sale of liquor to minors, and if the government wants to do a better job in public education, there's much that the government can and should do. Mr. Siu Kafai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Every time when we talk about drinking, many people refer to studies carried out by WHO and other international organizations. They will talk about the relationship with cardiovascular disease and heart disease and cancer. And alcohol is listed by WHO as a grade one carcinogen, light tobacco, asbestos and the like. And therefore, people are asking for stringent control and and heavy duties being imposed. But adults should be allowed the freedom to choose whatever is not banned by law. And I don't like to see hefty increases in duties. Otherwise, you will mean that rich people can use it, can drink, but not the people without means. But when it comes to drinking of by minors, I believe the majority of us will not object to the measures. Minors are not yet adults. They are still not mature. They may not have the judgment needed. If we allow them to drink, they will suffer serious consequences. So the regulation in this regard is not controversial. Although I represent the wholesalers and retailers, and many of them are selling liquor. As people say, that even if you like to make a big profit, you should do it within the confines of ethics. The bills propose that there should be no sale of liquor to those under eighteen. I haven't heard anyone from my constituency raising objection. But of course, they have views on some of the clauses in the bill, which I will talk about later. But here, I would like to tell the public on behalf of my constituents that the Hong Kong Retail Management Association stated many years ago, long before we have the anti-smoking policy, they issued a code for their members. And members were advised not to sell tobacco or wine or liquor to minors. I know that they have been enforcing this rather effectively. And now the government wants to enact legislation to implement the prohibition. Well, I'm not going to raise objection to that. But if you look at it from the business operation perspective, with one additional piece of legislation, you get one additional constraint. And also, there is the problem with gray areas in law enforcement. And some people may be trapped by the law inadvertently. People have talked about the details. In the, according to the bill, fine employees will have to pay attention so that they would not sell liquor to minors. And also, there are concerns about online purchase and the powers enjoyed by the inspectors and the search warrant and so on and so forth. I would reserve my remarks to the next part of our debate. Ms. Alice Mack.
Madam Chair, I rise to speak to support that clauses one to six of the bill stand part of the bill. By doing this, we will allow the C E in council to regulate and prohibit the sale of liquor to minors under eighteen. This amendment bill aims at prohibiting businesses from supplying and selling intoxicating liquor to minors. Under the licensing regime, a licensee is not allowed to supply intoxicating liquid to anyone under the age of eighteen to drink on any licensed premises. So the prohibition only extends to the selling, but not selling of liquor, but not drinking. And there's nothing to regulate the business of convenience stores in regard to selling of liquor to minors. In comparison, the consumption level is lower in Hong Kong as far as liquor is concerned. In twenty thirteen, the Department of Health commissioned Hong Kong University to study the drinking habit of youngsters. And it's found that primary and secondary students are commonly found to have consumed liquor. Forty-three point five percent of primary students were found to have drunk. And for senior and also secondary students, the percentage is even higher, among P one to P four. Four point seven percent drunk at least once a month. And for those in the age bracket of nine to eleven, roughly speaking, those in the age bracket of nine to eleven will not know what they would like to drink. So why are these students drinking for more than once a month? Is that a way to relieve pressure? I wonder if that's the reason why they drink. I support the inclusion of clauses one to six. That the clauses should stand the bill. Because that would mean that the sale of liquor to those under the age of eighteen would be prohibited. So the line is drawn at the minimum of, at a minimum age of eighteen years of age. That's in line with other similar statutory age limits. So it should be supported. In twenty fourteen, in a report on global drinking and health, among the one hundred sixty-six economies which submit reports to WHO, one hundred forty-five of them have imposed age limits on drinking by minors outside licensed premises. The most common age group factor would be the ten, age bracket of ten to twenty, but we don't have a similar. Ten or twenty of them set the limit at eighteen years of age, but we don't have the legislation now. Alcohol has been categorized by the WHO as a grade one carcinogen. That is, alcohol can cause cancer. And it's at the same level as tobacco, smoke, asbestos and ionizing radiation. So the harmful effect on our health is no less serious than tobacco. Therefore, I support that clauses one to six stand part of the bill so that in terms of law, we can do the regulation needed. And more importantly, we will convey an important message to the community that alcohol can be harmful, is harmful. I know there are voluntary codes adopted by the trade to prevent the sale of liquor to minors. We all want to protect minors from the harmful, the health effects arising from drinking. So I believe the bill represents the right direction to go.
The amendments will allow the market to refuse to sell liquor to minors with full backing. Before, there's no, you know, prescription. So for workers working, say, at convenience stores and so on, they have told us that they saw children coming to buy drinks. They seem underage, but then now there is no rule to prevent, to prohibit the selling of liquor to them. What if they say, I'm just buying a few cans of beer for my father? So do you sell or not sell to them? So that's why with now, now with the specific provisions, it will make life easier for frontline workers. And it will also send a clear message to the community. That's why we support that clauses one to six stand part of the bill. In developed countries, alcohol is a third risk factor apart from hypertension and tobacco smoke as a health hazard. There could be all sorts of problems, liver hepatitis, liver cancer and other dysfunction. So we're not trying to ban alcohol together, but we just want the public to understand that alcohol has harmful effects. It may not be a form of poison, but continuous consumption of alcohol thus have health hazards. So we just want the public to realize that. More importantly, we don't want our next generation to get into the habit of drinking alcohol at a young age. You know, Chinese people sometimes want to give children better immunity or ability to withstand pressure. So I don't know if it's like that for you. You know, when we were young, we were told that girls must learn how to drink, otherwise dangerous. So we were trained to drink from a young age. So it's hoped that with this bill, by making clauses one to six part of the bill, that would help send out the message to the public so they learn about the harmful effects of alcohol. That's why I support clauses one to six standing part of the bill. Thank you. Dr. K K Kwok.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support the Dutyable Commodities Amendment Bill twenty sixteen seventeen. We also agree that clauses one to six stand part of the bill. Now, the spirit of the bill is to prevent minors, i.e. those aged under eighteen, from drinking. I won't repeat many of the figures, but as a doctor, I've seen many cases of people losing their lives because of drinking or contracting chronic diseases because of drinking. So there are many harmful effects from drinking. One, the most obvious one is sclerosis of the liver. And towards the late stage of the disease, patients really suffer. It's similar to the images now for cigarette health warning advertisements. So I hope the government will also produce APIs like that. For patients who have liver sclerosis from drinking, towards the end of their life, there will be fluids in their abdomen. They can barely walk. Even if they are very young still, they would be moving towards death. You know, with liver sclerosis or liver failure because of drinking, this cannot be cured. It could only be just ways to relieve the pain and suffering. And it's not possible to restore the function of the liver. That means the family will never be the same again. If someone in the family contracts liver
If someone in the family contracts liver, has liver failure. So we only see the physical harm of alcohol in hospitals. But if you talk to family members of the patient, the patient is not the only one who suffers. Usually for a family with someone who drinks heavily, the family suffers. Because first of all, the person who drinks would have contract, would have liver failure starting from an early age. They're no longer able to work, so they can't contribute to the family's finances. And very often, for people who get drunk, they may commit domestic violence. They will hit their wives or their children. That leads to many tragedy in families. So that's why I'm sure the public would appreciate and support the government's move to prohibit the sale and supply of intoxicating liquor to minors. Now, there are staggering figures. I cannot have imagined that among young people, there's three point two percent of P four students who overdrink. One point two percent drinks once a month. We're talking about children under the age of ten. Once a month, they they go on a binge. That's inconceivable. And then, when they become older, say secondary six, eleven, twelve point one percent would overdrink. And twenty percent, two percent would drink at least once a month. We don't talk about tasting wine or anything, like you ask your daughter to try, to have a sip or two, just to try. We're talking about more than ten percent of secondary students drinking heavily. And five percent of them drink every month. And another alarming figure, five out of ten aged under ten have had a drink. Now, this government has not proposed duty-free, you know, waiving of duty for wine. That's helped to, the previous government did that and it helped to boost the wine trade. But it sent out a really bad message to the community. So 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 people don't see that they shouldn't drink, but rather it seems the government has a policy to encourage more people to drink. Now, I agree to clauses one to six by always saying the government does not do enough. It never does, actually. Now, if there are advertisements or publicity to tell people not to smoke. I've never seen similar publicity, you know, government APIs that alcohol is harmful to your health. I've never heard that. It's not just about those under eighteen is wrong to think so. Of course, well, people under eighteen, we agree we shouldn't sell them liquor. But even for people about eighteen, i.e. adults, they shouldn't be encouraged to drink too because alcohol is really harmful to health. And especially for people under eighteen. Madam Deputy, these people are not mature enough yet to know what they should do and what they shouldn't. Now, we're talking about the actual physical harm. I mentioned that. And then for pediatricians, they have also mentioned the impact on children's development. Now, alcohol would interfere with the development of the central nervous system. Many studies have shown that if there's a huge consumption of alcohol or even overdrinking, then that could do much harm to young people. Now, for clauses one to six, they are not controversial. But at the Bills Committee, I have asked the government to do more. So there is better protection for minors. For example, at all places selling liquor, there should be a health warning. That is, underage drinking has permanent, causes permanent damage. Underage drinking poses serious health hazards, or he said, a permanent damage. But then the government wouldn't agree to do so. And I'm disappointed because we've spent so much time and effort to get over the government to try to stop minors from drinking. And then we have actually spent a lot of time at the Bills Committee to ask various persons come and give their views. Many in the medical profession also express reservations that the government has not done enough. Why can't the government propose this on its own? How come the scope of the bill is so narrow? Yes, I agree to the amendments to clauses one to six, but that's not really my concern. It's not about clauses one to six, but rather how the government could enforce the new requirements. Last week, the ombudsman conducted an invest, announced that it's conducted an investigation on his own accord. Then that is indoor air pollution is serious. And I'm talking about pollution by tobacco smoke. Now, at bars, night entertainment venues or restaurants, this is a serious problem. Even for government venues, LCSD venues or FHC news, no one seems to care. Now, why is that all sudden I've switched to tobacco control? Because we've asked the government how it's been enforcing the requirement because we have high expectation of this bill. After this bill is passed into law, how do we enforce it? We're told that they will rely on the existing structure of the Department of Health, but the Department of Health doesn't have such a structure. The only relevant structure is probably the Tobacco Control Office. But the Tobacco Control Office is not able to do its job properly. It doesn't work on weekends and public holidays or maybe at night. And when it's the peak hours where people might smoke indoors, the office does nothing. And now you want this office to take up an additional duty? Is that a joke, Madam Chair, Deputy? Because this office is not doing its own job properly. And now the government is saying that, okay, let please pass this bill, Dutyable Commodities Amendment Bill into law. And then we will ask the office to take up the work. But how can they do it? They can't, they they are making a mess out of the enforcement of tobacco ban. So even if the bill is passed, I'm really worried about enforcement. So we will be like our neighbor, the mainland. There is, there may be laws, but no one follow. Because as long as there are laws written down, it's fine. And people, the government could tell people, okay, we have already passed this bill, so the law is there. But that's not enough, you need to deliver. And who do you ask to deliver results? The Department of Health is responsible for enforcing relevant laws. And every time we ask the government to provide more resources for enforcement. Whether it be for prohibiting consumption of alcohol by minors or, you know, inspecting dispensaries and so on. Because so far, the track record has been really poor. I think the government needs to respond to our queries. First of all, you need to convince us. Now, of course, I will support this bill, especially this part without amendments.
The question is. Afterwards, there will be many people and places that have to be subsumed under the regulation. The administration is not only proposing to regulate convenience stores and supermarkets. Basically, they are also trying to regulate remote distribution, meaning the sale of liquor online to minors. That is what is scary. We said many times and we also asked the administration to further regulate remote distribution. And whether there could be more restrictions so that there would not be any harm done to minors. Including that when there is sale, the purchaser should show a proof of identity. And also there should be more evidence so that the shop or the seller will make sure that they will not be trapped by the law. But the administration did not discuss any of those. It did not say what can be done, they say no proof of identity is possible. Using a credit card as a proof or asking for more assurance, nothing will do. And what is proposed now is to make a declaration. The purchaser will just have to click a declaration online. If this is effective, there would not be so many porn sites or the sale of, sale of tobacco online. People would just have to make a check or check a box and there will not be any verification. We asked the administration whether they will take the initiative to patrol the internet. They said no, and they would rely on complaints. Now, what is the logic? Who are the people who will complain? If I'm a minor buying liquor, I will not complain because it's so convenient. I can buy whenever I want. And if I sell to people under eighteen, I would not complain against myself. How would the sellers make a complaint? So who will be complaining? So the D of H will know. So this will not happen. It means there will not be any complaints and there will not be any enforcement. Even if we support you, even we support the incorporation of clauses one to six. There will not be any enforcement. This will be very bad. It's a bad precedent. Meaning whether something is enforceable is not important, just pass it. So does it mean that by saying you will do something, that amounts to really doing it? Why support the present amendment? Mister Roy Kwong, thank you, Madam Deputy. As Doctor Kwok put it so well. Does it mean the administration will only talk the talk and not walk the walk? How will the amendment bill be enforced? We draw a blank here. Is our society appealing to the young not to drink? Of course, because it will do harm to young people. Today, we discussed the Dutyable Commodities Amendment Bill twenty seventeen and we are at this stage. The general view is we support the incorporation of clauses one to six into the bill. But what will you do then? Just now, Chairman or Madam Deputy, we heard from members saying that they just have to click a declaration and you would be deemed to be over eighteen, so you can buy liquor. That is quite magical, isn't it? The administration will have to answer us. Supposing the bill is passed today. How do you address this enforcement blank? The objective of the Dutyable Commodities Amendment Bill twenty seventeen is to ban the sale and supply of intoxicating liquor to minors, including face-to-face and remote distribution. Remote distribution is crucial. Well, this belongs to the next debate, but what we have to tackle is to, how we can regulate this? And you can do it online, you can do it by mail or over the phone. How can we really ban the sale of liquor to minors? What are the details? As members said. The administration has done a messy job with indoor smoking or the ban of indoor smoking. But it's still worrying to us. Okay, we passed the bill, we support you, but what are you going to do? How will you operate? How will you achieve the purpose? Or is it that you just try to comfort us by writing this into the bill? Our starting point is simple, that is. Under the WHO, it is a group-one carcinogen. How can we allow minors to stay away from alcohol? Some members said that some primary students have taken to binge drinking. Now, that's worrying. Since the year two thousand, we started to enforce cap one eight oh nine B. That is the Dutyable Commodities Liquor Regulations. So that minors cannot consume liquor at licensed premises. And the Hong Kong Retail Management Association has got the same regulation. In other words, convenience stores and supermarkets are trying not to sell liquor to minors. The thing is. Okay, the bill or the regulation may be clear, but will people then now turn to the internet for buying liquor or will they do it in domestic premises? Of course, we won't encourage minors to drink. We would say that minors should stay away from alcohol and will support the bill. But after the bill is endorsed, does it mean we are going to achieve the purpose of having minors stay away from alcohol? I doubt it. Our civic education and also policies don't seem to be going in that direction. At least we can't feel it. Maybe the administration can cite concrete examples to let us know that is not the case. In fact, at this stage. We are trying to see whether you can ban it in face-to-face distribution, say at a convenience store. You have to rely on the staff at the convenience store, whether they are willing to screen the customers. Should I ask if I doubt that you're a minor? And I would have to find out whether you're a minor before I sell liquor to you. In nineteen ninety-four, Hong Kong started to ban the sale of tobacco at shops to minors. And the surveys said that in twenty oh eight, seventy-three percent of tobacco products were sold to minors, including restaurants and newspaper vendors. And this brings back us back to the main issue. Even if the bill is passed, how can you ensure that you have the capability to enforce it? We were talking about tobacco sale. That is a case in point. The same may go for the sale of liquor. Also, very often. Minors may not buy the liquor themselves. Some surveys have shown that even three years old have tasted liquor. How can a three-year-old buy liquor? That goes to show that even if you make it impossible for minors to buy liquor. You can't stop adults who are friends, who may buy liquor for minors and children. So all in all, it boils down to education and publicity. I hope I can hear from the administration that it has a series of plans to safeguard the physical and mental health of minors. And since it is now not possible for minors to buy alcohol. So when the administration approaches a policy, does it adopt a macro does it adopt a macro angle to include the impact and also the original intent of that policy? In 2012, a local survey showed us, and that is a survey on whether parents agreed to drinking. Well, that would have an impact on young children drinking liquor or not. Isn't it natural if parents drink, the children may drink? And of course, children may be permitted to drink in that survey. One seven three eight students from four secondary schools were interviewed, asking them whether they would drink once a month at least, whether they always drank, whether they tasted alcohol. And the result was that it was crucial whether parents would allow that. If the parents would say that wine is really good and the children would drink. And even if they help parents pop the cock, it would be some kind of enlightenment for children and the children might be interested in finding out whether wine tasted good. Therefore, it's a kind of education and we must try to allow this to go into people's homes. In overseas countries, this is very severe. Now in Hong Kong, we are writing this bill. We don't even know how it will operate. And we just hope that when you have the regulation, you should allow this awareness to go into homes and the market so people will subscribe to the idea that we need to safeguard the next generation who should be kept away from alcohol. Coming back to the incorporation of clauses one to six into the bill first, we'll support it. But we'd like to know, in the absence of an alcohol control office, even if we have a tobacco control office, how are you going to enforce the law? Okay, we subscribe to that value. That has always been the case. We think it's a problem for minors to buy liquor. Even at the Bills Committee, we said that we subscribe to it and we debated whether it was necessary. And then if it was necessary, what should be done and whether you have excessive powers? That would belong to the next debate. And that is whether you would give unjustified powers to the inspectors. But all in all, if the administration really intends to ban minors from buying liquor, then you should not stop with regulations and policy. You should go at the source and try to allow the message to infiltrate into society. Dr. Quoc said in hospitals, some people might be there because they suffer as a result of binge drinking. So you can see, and we will be alerted to our health and protecting our liver. Should we start with education? And when people have the awareness after the bill is passed, I would again emphasize enforcement. How do you verify people who click online that they are minors? And in the end, they are not minors, but in the end they are minors. And on the other hand, the seller can only rely on the clicking of the declaration. Should I believe you or should I not believe you because I don't know? Say, for example, I operate an online shop. What happens to me? What about the gathering of evidence? This may belong to the next debate and we must focus on this point in the next debate. But here I would put down a footnote. And that is, in general, our view is to protect minors and allow them to stay away from alcohol.
I would reserve some remarks to the next session. Does any other member wish to speak? Mr. Chan Hang Pan. Thank you, Madam Chair. The bill is good. We should protect minors, especially those who are young children because drinking may cause health problems to them. So I support the bill. But this is similar to tobacco control legislation. I would say enforcement is going to be difficult. The ombudsman has actually conducted an investigation into tobacco control. In the future, if we have a liquor control office, I believe the same problems faced by the TCO would be faced by the liquor control office. I would like to get more information from the government on enforcement so that the legislation will not be just on paper. The problem with TCO is the lack of manpower to enforce the law at night. Drinking may happen after school hours for students. One-third and one-quarter of prosecution of smokers are related to cases in the evening. But actually, smoking is more serious, smoking offense is more serious in the evening. And there's been no prosecution during holidays. So when you have a lot of smokers, smoking, they don't have anyone to enforce the law. If you don't have anyone that you can send out to enforce the law at nighttime, then it's not going to be effective. So if we have an LBO liquor control, LCO liquor control office, the same problem would be faced by them. Hong Kong is big and the TCO has got only a staff of seventy-nine. They have an establishment of eighty-nine, but have just hired, managed to hire seventy-nine. And while they are recruiting more on their way out because this is law enforcement work and you may have to argue with the offender whether you have witnessed someone smoking. And do you allow the use of webcam by the TCO officer as evidence? That would afford more protection to the officer. If you want to catch people discarding secret bars or spitting onto the ground, how can you prove that the person really did that? If I'm under eighteen and I ask Mr. Houghton Chow to sell a beer to me, there's no recording. And then someone query why Mr. Chow sold a beer to me? And if there's no proof, if I'm asked about that, I of course deny it. So there will be no evidence. So it's important that we have, we give law enforcement officers the right tool and equipment. And we have to make good use of technology and allow them to use technology to enforce law. I did ask the FHD whether they would allow their officers to use a video camera to record what happens and then you have evidence. But it's not allowed. The evidence cannot be used in that way. I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong about this. But what about the future liquor control office? Can they video record the whole process and then they would have the evidence? This would prevent the possible conflicts between the officer and the offender. I've seen the TCO officers in action. They have a tough job because they have to argue with people and offenders may dispute what happened. And they may also be verbally abused. So I hope that in terms of pay of the future officers and there should be sufficient provisions and remuneration. And also we should make sure that there are nighttime officers doing the job. If we carry out an undercover operation, the officer will be in plainclothes and he would try buy liquor and then the evidence will be gathered. In the process, if if I say, let's say I ask Mr. Houghton Chow to sell me liquor. And if I'm not willing to testify in court, can you still prosecute Mr. Houghton Chow for selling liquor to a minor that is me? That would be a problem. The same has happened to the TCO. If the relevant citizen, the relevant person is unwilling to act as a witness. And also the question of the deployment of plainclothes officers. The TCO officers are in uniform. It's just like people yelling that someone is issuing penalty tickets to restaurant goers. And when TCO officers show up, then the people shout that TCO is here and people would just extinguish their secrets. What about the liquor control office? If the salesperson sees someone looks like LCO officers coming, of course, I would act with restraint. But if you allow to everyone to be in plainclothes, that's the problem of impersonation of your officers. You should have sufficient manpower to deploy, to conduct, if necessary, undercover operations so that the law can be effectively enforced. When we enact a piece of legislation, we may have a very good intentions and purposes that we want to achieve. But the important thing is that it should, it can, that it's only effective when properly enforced. And they are not supposed to call the police every time there's a dispute or conflict. If you want to arrest a person or you want to initiate prosecution, which would carry a fine of five thousand dollars, unlike a parking ticket which costs the offender three hundred and twenty dollars. And we have seen on YouTube that even police officers, police officers issuing penalty tickets can be verbally abused. So what happened to the liquor control officers? Would they have to call the police every time they want to initiate prosecution? So I'm also concerned about this personal safety of these officers. Or I haven't found any solution to these perceived problems. I'm not a member of Bills Committee, but I have read the bill. What about the establishment of the liquor control office? Are you going to submit an application to the ESC for the post to be created? And if someone has been found guilty on some occasions, would there be a demerit point system so that one day if they have to apply for liquor license, the record of selling liquor to minors might be called out? And as a result, would they find it more difficult to get a license or have a license renewed? This is an important issue. Buying liquor from a convenience store is straightforward. There's no need for the convenience store to be licensed. But if you go to a restaurant to buy liquor, the restaurant is licensed. But very often, there is a convenience store next to the restaurant. And actually, the convenience store and the restaurant are operated by the same person. They do this to evade the liability. I recently went to a restaurant for hot pot and I was asked to buy two beers from the convenience store. I asked the counter staff whether I can get it from the store. They said, yes, you can get it yourself from the upper floor, which has a sign which read store. In the future, would it be a requirement that there should be someone there keeping watch or should someone verify that the purchaser is over eighteen? There are many operational problems and there's a chance that innocent parties may be caught inadvertently. On that evening, I saw some young people who may just had had examination. They were having hot pot and they got the liquor from the same place. I don't know whether it's wine or beer because they were stored in the same place. I don't want restaurant operators to be caught by the new law unknowingly or inadvertently. I know there will be a six months of grace period for the transition. Can we make use of the transition to convey the message so that suitable modification can be made by the trade to comply with the law? These are all details related to enforcement. I believe the departments must have got some measures to deal with them. So when this bill is passed, I hope the Bureau would come up with a better enforcement system. And they should certainly pay attention to the details and should afford the officers' safety. Mr. Yu Se-Wing. Thank you, Madam Chair. I chair the Bills Committee of this bill. We had five meetings. We discussed matters such as the new regulatory system and the scope and the identity, the age declaration and also prescribed notice, the defense provision and also the power of health inspectors. Members generally support the prohibition of sale of liquor to minors. But members have diverse views on the provisions. I support the inclusion of clauses one to six in the bill. Does any other member wish to speak? If not, I'll invite the Secretary for Food and Health to speak. I thank the members who have spoken. They have given us a lot of valuable views in regard to clauses one to six. And I thank Mr. Yu Se-Wing, the Chairman of Bills Committee, for valuable contributions made during the scrutiny of the bill. I would like to respond to members' comments in a succinct manner. I would like to thank Mr. Houghton Chow for his comments on the bill.
For minors in Hong Kong, some of them actually buy their own alcohol. And that's a cause for concern. Recently, there are some studies have been done for primary students, about ten percent, secondary school, about thirty percent. So about minors buying liquor, it is a problem that this bill tries to tackle by plugging the loophole. Many members have asked us to step up our public education and publicity effort. And then some colleagues, some members suggested this could come in various forms. For example, on liquor bottles, there should be some health education readings. And then other views have also been expressed. In fact, in two thousand and one, the Department of Health has published a an action plan on reducing the harm of alcohol to health. There are seventeen actions listed in the in the plan. And these have been rolled out one by one. There are five priority areas, ten recommendations, and seventeen actions in the action plan. Action seventeen is to propose the administration to study the possibility of limiting the sale of liquor to people above eighteen. And of course, the spill and its response to the recommendation of the action plan. Now, on monitoring research or monitoring the patterns of or the drink behavior of young people, various recommendations were made in the plan as well. The government has been stepping up cooperation with various sectors in community. And also, we try to educate the public about the harm of alcohol to health. In two thousand and sixteen to seventeen, that's a health campaign about not taking alcohol. It was a giant effort with different departments and groups. So we want to have to to have young people being free from, staying away from alcohol. So that's the culture we want to promote. And that activity is that approach actually covers various forms. In the coming months, we're going to step up publicity. And then we will also regularly monitor websites where liquor is sold. We'll also issue emails regularly to the trade to remind them to follow the requirements. So we're going to step up our enforcement effort. Some members express concern about self-service for the sale of alcohol. Now, there are distribution machines, automatic distribution machines set up in bars. They are not the same as vending machines in public place. For this distribution machine, usually the customers pay the shoppers staff and then they go and collect their drinks. And for the latter, it's a totally automated transaction. So for people who are business operators in, say, face-to-face contact with purchasers, the situation is different than or even for, you know, the case where customers pay the shopfront and then collect drinks from the machines, this is still regarded as face-to-face distribution. Then there are other many members who express concern about our enforcement effort, whether we have enough staff. And then for remote distribution, how we're going to enforce the law more effectively. Now, after the bill is passed into law, the Department of Health will set up a liquor control and publicity unit. We will set up an enforcement team to carry out inspection and also surveillance on different points of sale, licensed places or retail points and so on. This is to make sure that the operators will follow the requirements and also the unit will handle complaints. So therefore, at that we will have the manpower to address various issues. Of course, many, some members a member referred to the case of the Tobacco Control Office for smoking ban indoor discovers a much larger scope because we're not just talking about minors, we're talking about the smoking ban for everybody. So we may require more manpower and also the situation is more complex. But then for sale and supply of liquor to minors or the relevant prohibition, we would be able to carry out effective enforcement and we could set up backup teams as well. As Mister Ben Chen mentioned, maybe we will carry out operations late at night. We will take up prosecution. And also, this unit will be in charge of publicity and education effort. For face-to-face distribution, for remote distribution, while members have expressed views or made suggestions to us during the Bills Committee meetings, we know that enforcement may be difficult, but we will try our best. And we will try to strike a balance too. And we're not going to overburden the trade. And then on protection of privacy and monitoring of online purchase activities, again, we'll try to strike the right balance. This bill will actually plug the loophole so that for both license and our premises and retail points, then we could restrict sales of liquor to minors. This is for the well-being of minors. Now, we of course monitor the trend of retail, remote distribution of liquor. We will conduct review and if necessary, we will tighten regulation over remote distribution. So, in conclusion, the purpose of this bill is to plug an existing loophole as soon as possible. Members refer to licensed premises. In fact, for licensed premises already, no supply of alcohol is allowed to minors. But then for sale of liquor, there is now a loophole. That's why we need to do something about retail points. Now, this bill is only one of the means deployed by the Department of Health in controlling the consumption of liquor. In, as I mentioned, in the two thousand and sixteen seventeen action plan, there are various initiatives. We are taking them forward step by step. And then as far as public education is concerned, we try to let parents and young people know about the harm of alcohol. Thank you. And I'll put the question to you that clauses one to six stand part of the bill. Were those in favor? Please raise their hands. Those against? Please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by a majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. Clause seven. Secretary for Food and Health, you may move your amendments. Chairman, I move my two groups of amendments to amend clause seven. This amendment is to respond to the enforcement needs in future as well as some suggestions of the Bills Committee. This amendment is covered four items. First, we propose to delete the definition of agent. And so prohibition against the sale and supply of liquor to minor, intoxicating liquor to minors, we, for the relevant provisions, we propose to add an exception to exclude those who are only responsible for the delivery of alcohol in the course of business without being involved in the sale and supply of alcohol. And here we're talking about people such as the post office staff or delivery and courier staff. And secondly, to ensure effective enforcement of the bill, including inspection of premises and the collection of evidence where there is suspicion of someone having committed an offense, we propose to move an amendment to replace public place with distribution point. Inspectors may enter the distribution point at any reasonable time and inspect the area. This is to make sure whether the new provisions in the regulations are complied with. And originally, we have adopted the term public place and there is not a specific definition in the bill. In accordance with interpretation and general clauses ordinance, cap one, public place means public, any public street or pier or any public garden and any theater place or public entertainment or any kind or other place of general resort. And this usually may not cover the places of sale of liquor. So that's why we propose instead to replace the term with distribution note. And also, for, which means a place other than domestic premises where intoxicating liquor is is or has been sold or supplied in the course of business. And this is to specify the scope of enforcement for inspectors. Third point, domestic premises has been deleted from the definition of distribution point. If someone sells, supplies or sells liquor to minors in domestic premises or they use domestic premises for hiding their criminal evidence such as the computer system for online sales of liquor, we propose that as long as there is as long as it is satisfied by information on oath by an inspector that there are reasonable grounds for suspecting that there is within domestic premises, anything that's likely to be evidence or an offense, the magistrate may issue a search warrant in respect of such premises. So inspectors will be empowered to enter and search the domestic premises and exercise their powers as set out in the provision such as seizing or relevant evidence. Now, there are already similar provisions in relation to domestic premises. Without this provision, inspectors will not be able to apply for search warrants to enter domestic premises for enforcement and that will create a loophole. This amendment are to, are in response to the deliberations of the Bills Committee. So these amendments are supported by the Bills Committee, but then recently we have learned that after the Bills Committee has given its support to the resumption of the second reading of the bill, some members have expressed view have expressed alternative views on whether the support of giving powers to inspectors to enter and search domestic premises. That's why we propose to group the amendments into two separate groups so members could vote on them separately. And then members could clearly express their views in relation to empowering inspectors to enter and search domestic premises with a search warrant. I must stress again, if inspectors do not have the powers to do so where there is reasonable doubt, then that means it will become the hotbed. Domestic premises will become the hotbed for the sale and supply of intoxicating liquor to minors and that will create gaping loophole in the law. So we ask members to support the amendments. Thank you.
The Honorable Holden Chow. Mister Chairman, in the last segment, we focused on the overall bill and that is to legislate to ban the sale or supply of intoxicating liquor to minors. I think within the council, members agreed that we should support the bill. But about clause seven and the amendments, I believe we should really go deeper into the discussion. There will be two groups of amendments and I will take the time here to tell members the difference between the two groups of amendments. And after listening to me, I hope you will think very carefully about how you will vote. First of all, I will speak on the first group of amendments. As the secretary was saying and also as I said in my last speech at the Bills Committee, we indeed said that if there are delivery workers or couriers or people delivering postal items, if they themselves are not employees of the company selling the liquor or they are not engaged in that business in any way, then frankly speaking, we understand the bill does not target these people because we should be targeting the suppliers of liquor. That is why we should exclude these people from the bill. Therefore, on the first group of amendments, the administration has already taken on board the views of members, including mine. And they are now proposing them as the first group of amendments. As to the second group of amendments, I really have to speak on this. I think this is the most crucial part of the bill. I really do have some views on this group of amendments. This is about allowing an inspector or an enforcement officer to collect evidence at domestic premises. Of course, it says here that first of all, a magistrate must issue a search warrant before domestic premises can be entered by a public officer. Some people may ask, Holden, a search warrant will have to be sought from the court. Then you should allow the inspectors to search domestic premises. And why are you still objecting? Chairman, allow me to say something about the background. In terms of legal principles and legal operation, we always talk about proportionality. Members understand that regulating the sale of liquor to minors is something we should do. Definitely, we don't want to encourage minors to drink. We don't want them to become drunkards because they start to drink at a minor age. But we also understand that while we say we don't want to sell liquor to minors, we are not regarding this as a serious offense. Chairman, sometimes when we talk about a serious offense or a highness crime, well, it may be drug trafficking or terrorist offenses. If we are talking about that category of offenses, law enforcement agencies should be allowed to collect evidence at domestic premises after securing a search warrant from the court. I believe that will be necessary. But today, we are talking about banning the sale of liquor to minors. Is this offense so serious as to necessitate the allowing of law enforcement agencies to search domestic premises? I also doubt the proportionality and I like to tell you about the situation on the ground when the law is enforced. In fact, many members have already mentioned this. Many members asked how we should enforce the law after the bill is supported. In fact, we should focus our attention on regulating shops in the streets which are selling liquor. How we can engage in appropriate inspection or covert operation in order to tackle the shops which sell liquor to minors? Many members are questioning. One, do you have enough power to do inspection in the streets? Do you have the capacity to mount appropriate covert or test spy operations? Number three, will you be doing inspections at the appropriate time? These are very pragmatic enforcement issues. Allow me to say this. Of course, the Bureau really wants to deal with this bill. I don't doubt your goodwill or good intentions. But when it comes to the details of enforcement, members will really want to ask you how you will enforce the law on the street, on the shops in the streets. When the Bureau speaks again in reply, please explain this to members. We don't want this bill after being supported will come to nothing because you really have to focus on the shops in the street. Because now minors can easily enter these shops and buy liquor. This is what you should deal with and not spend your energy on empowering search of domestic premises. Mister Chairman, why I have such serious reservations? Frankly speaking, as a practicing lawyer, proportionality is so important to me. It's my principle. I can't accept that when there is clear absence of proportionality, we still prefer to turn a blind eye and give that empowerment. Today, if you can depart from the principle of proportionality today, does it mean you can also allow this to happen in other circumstances? I will reiterate that I will trust the court that it will act according, strictly according to rules when it issues a search warrant. But Chairman, when the offenses do not dictate proportionality, should we lightly allow the search of domestic premises? As a legal practitioner, I really think that proportionality is so important. If we do this too easily, I will be worried that later on, when proportionality is also absent, we will also empower the search of domestic premises lightly. I sought an understanding during the scrutiny of the bill. And in fact, in our ordinances, we also allow the search of domestic premises. For example, the noise control laws and also laws regulating personal privacy. But there are different reasons for this to be included in different ordinances. Talking about noise is because people make noises at home and therefore there must be the collection of evidence in domestic premises. But under this bill, we should be dealing with shops in the street and public places or distribution points because that is the amendment being proposed. We should not be looking at domestic premises. Some members told me that they asked that question. My question for you is, you want to gather evidence in domestic premises. What will you be looking for? And will this really help your adusing of evidence in court? May, well, perhaps you should mount covert operation and that is more effective than searching domestic premises. And frankly speaking, of course, you can search many different things. As a lawyer, we must act according to the law and you cannot venture outside the scope of the search warrant. However, unavoidably, if there is reasonable suspicion that a laptop or a computer is dealing with those transactions, that computer can be seized and removed. I'm citing these examples, Chairman, to tell you that when we make legislation, we need to balance different factors. What we want to do is that we should achieve the purpose of the bill, but we should not allow it to give rise to disproportionate side effects. And we must not forget basic legal principles. Chairman, I understand that members may have different views. I welcome members' discussion on these two groups of amendments. I stand to be corrected if I have said anything wrong. But the chamber is exactly where we should state our different views. So through this debate, we can improve the bill. At the same time, Chairman, I'd like to make the last point now. Let us step back a little. After passing the bill, if one fine day the Bureau discovers that sale of liquor only happens at domestic premises. Now, if that should happen, I agree that you can take a review and then you come back to tell us that the powers should be extended to the search of domestic premises and I will support you. But we are only at stage one of making the legislation and you already want to search domestic premises. I believe that's not appropriate. I believe there should be a process. You must allow people to understand the principle of proportionality. Chairman, I will reiterate that there are two groups of amendments. The first group is mainly on the exclusion of delivery workers or courier companies. They will not be included for regulation. So they will not be victimized in a way. The second group of amendments are about allowing inspectors to go into domestic premises after securing a search warrant. Chairman, we must not forget the principle of proportionality. We should not open the floodgate for enforcers to go into domestic premises. I will stop here and if necessary, I will supplement later. Thank you.
Mister Yu Siwing. Thank you, Chairman. The aim is to, of the bill is to ban the selling of liquor to minors. But we have to be mindful about the way the law is to be enforced. Online shopping is very common. There's no need to go to a shop to buy anything. And for this amendment, we're talking about whether third party delivery worker would have to shoulder the responsibility to check ID. But there are two ways to do online shopping. Or you can have a shop, a physical shop and deliver to the customer's place. Or you can have an online store established such as online or TV mall. And the online platform would provide the delivery, the payment system. But for various shops would be responsible for delivery, for storage and delivery. It's just like the electro, e-supermarket or e-departmental store. And actually, the customer will buy different commodities from different suppliers. Many the daily necessities and goods that you need for daily life. And liquor is one, is a mainstay commodity. For example, HK TV mall, if you click on the category of liquor, you can have seventeen hundred different brands to choose. So the choice is very diverse. And many people also buy the food and daily necessities from online platforms. First of all, they don't have to pay anything for delivery and they don't have to take the goods back to their home from a supermarket, especially when the goods are heavy. So they do the shopping online, which is more and more popular. And the, and the business operations are highly regularized and we have a very detailed arrangement for payment and delivery. Very often, the courier company or logistics operators will be commissioned to do the delivery. If the delivery worker has to check the ID of the recipient, there are many problems. Just imagine. You know, CEO can also pool their purchase to save the delivery cost. And that is to say, they would buy from different suppliers and ship the, the commodities in one go, in one delivery. We know that the courier workers are very efficient. They would deliver the goods and leave right away. If there's no recipient, sometimes they will leave the goods with the caretaker of the building. So this is a very routine operation on the part of the courier, the worker. And it's difficult to ask them to check the ID of the recipient, actual recipient. And the government is trying to make a distinction between two types of delivery, the courier workers who are either directly employed by the supplier or not. Well, of course, if the delivery worker is employed by the supplier, he should be duty bound to check the ID. The employer can provide a training and make the necessary arrangements for this to be done. But if the worker is not employed by the supplier, then we need to be careful. For example, for online shop, shopping service, it's difficult to check, to ask the delivery worker to check the ID. So we are, we agree that they should be exempted. The so-called third party delivery worker, and that is to say, those who are not employed by the direct supplier are to be excluded. But the wording of the bill is not really very precise. So we may easily misunderstand the requirement and that the third party worker may still be held accountable. And now we want, the CSA would do something about thirty-five, forty-seven, forty, bracket, forty-two, forty-four bracket two, forty-four bracket one A, forty-four A, capital A. And that is to say, a person delivering intoxicating liquor in the course of business for another person who sells or supply the liquor will not be regarded as selling or supplying liquor. That's not subject to the new regulatory regime, provided that such person is not employed by the seller or supplier or involved in the sale or supply of liquor. And that will say, the third party delivery worker who is not directly employed by the seller or the supplier will be exempted. Another third, there will be a consequential amendment to thirty-five and the definition of agent will be deleted. So the law is made clearer by these amendments and therefore I support the amendments. For the second group of amendments, they also have my support. It's that the magistrate, if he's satisfied by certain grounds, they can issue a warrant so that inspector may enter private, private domestic premises to collect evidence, to the, to support an investigation into unlawful sale of liquor to minors. And this is to give the powers to the law enforcement officers. The original power given to an inspector is confined to public place. But this is two wire definition. Now this is going to replace my distribution point. Distribution point means where intoxicating liquor is supplied, but not including the domestic premises. The inspector may at the retail outlets enforce the law. But since online shopping is getting more and more popular nowadays, so customers may get liquor from a shop and also from, and domestic premises may be used for the distributing the intoxicating liquor as well. And therefore, it would create a gray area. People can make use of this gray area to disregard the harmful effect to minors by the liquor and they would be distributing or selling liquor from their, from domestic premises. Some would think that, well, this is not serious at the, at a moment because you can buy from the retail shops, but not in the future. Minors can buy liquor from shops now. In the future, they cannot do so. And if domestic premises are exempted, people would make use of the gray area in law to distribute or sell liquor to minors. And if this is allowed, it would not help with the intention to the, prevent the selling of liquor to minors. Therefore, I think, I, I believe that in order that the intended purpose can be achieved, we should allow an inspector the power to enter domestic premises to conduct an investigation. Under normal circumstances, police officers can enter premises to conduct a search with, if there's a search warrant. Some has proposed that if we don't allow the power in this ordinance and, and ask the police to do the job, this is not really satisfactory. If this is a good arrangement. Well, you know, the buildings department also in the past empower police officers to enter such premises. But since twenty twelve, the law was amended for the for their own officers to enter premises to collect evidence, to enforce the law against UPWs. In the past, the police had a problem with their understanding of the building ordinance. In the tourism industry, if some people lodge a complaint against unlicensed travel agents, which I have firsthand experience, we would refer the matter to the registry. And the matter would be referred to the police, because they don't, the registry doesn't have the manpower to do the investigation. The police would inspect the place in concern. And if the place is actually the business location of a money changer, they're selling tourism-related products. And they would say that since the money changer is licensed, there's no problem. And the police would tell the registry that there's no problem. The registry would tell the complainant. That is okay, but the complainant would say that it's not okay, because they're selling tourism-related products there. And then I have to ask again whether, what kind of license they've got. They have a business license for a non-related business. It's not a license for tourism products. So I think relying on the police may not achieve the intended purpose and effectiveness. So it's better that the inspectors be empowered to conduct the search after applying for a warrant. It would be better than asking the police to conduct the investigation and collect the evidence. I've already referred to the example of the buildings department. They changed the practice and the law. And the T I C would also introduce amendments to the law so that the future authority would be vested with the necessary power. So I think that we should give, in this case, we should give the inspector to apply for a warrant and conduct an investigation. Some members are concerned whether the power will be too wide, whether there will be abuse of power. In my view, there's no need to worry. Because in other government departments are doing, are having similar systems. And the magistrate is of course capable of considering the grounds presented by the law enforcement agency. And if you think this power is too wide, then I would say the police are already having this power. And I don't think we should vote down this amendment because of the concern of the power being too excessive. I support the second group of amendments.
Mr. Tommy Chong. Chairman, I support this amendment. For the new regulation forty-four, that is magistrate, if satisfied, may issue a search warrant in respect of some premises and allow inspectors to collect evidence on offense in relation to new, to the part five. I have issues with that. Now for where on the, where there is no display of prescribed notice in the, in the website, and this does not happen in domestic premises. So why go to domestic premises to collect your evidence? For the new proposed regulation forty-four bracket one A, this is about offense of selling or supply of liquor to persons under eighteen years of age. So it doesn't matter whether it's face-to-face distribution or remote distribution. The thing is, many people do keep alcohol at home. You and I keep liquor at home, chairman, probably in a large quantity as well. But then if inspectors believe that it's evidence of a crime, could that become the pretext used by inspectors in applying for a search warrant? And then we cannot protect privacy of people. Well, it said that in other legislation, there's a similar provision. But what if people sell liquor without license in domestic premises? Then it doesn't matter whether the liquor is sold to minors or majors. Already, the police could already raid the venue, and that's a criminal offense. Now with this amendment, are people, is it case that with business operations, they now hide in domestic premises to sell liquor to people under eighteen? Could it become a loophole? So domestic premises become the sales point for minors? Why do we focus only on domestic premises? And why don't, and why is it that it's not a criminal offense? Now, the construction of the clause is similar to that for other provisions, for the police to search the premises. Now, already, there are relevant provisions to empower police to apply for a search warrant for any premises. And but then those are for criminal offenses. Here, it is not a criminal offense, so how come we have a similar provision? Now, I see the secretary here, and I, her predecessor came to mind, that is Dr. York Chow. This is while smoking ban at the workplace. And what does it say then? There's a provision that is if the police suspect you have a packet of cigarettes, then he can search you. And of course, I reacted strongly to that. How is it unlawful to carry a packet of cigarette? Now, I mean, you don't have to suspect me it. I may even, you know, wear it on my neck. Of course, it's an offense to smoke at the workplace. Now, it's an offense to smoke in the bus or at the beach. But if I have a packet of cigarettes on me, how can that become a ground for you to search me? And then even, now, I don't know if there are still hands-off records, but you know, our Democratic colleagues with moral high ground, they didn't oppose to that. And then I proposed to move an amendment, and I dared the others to vote down my amendment. But eventually, the secretary was smart enough to delete that clause. Chairman, you and I have been in this shape for a long time. I've always said that when the government has counted enough votes, then the devil is in the details. This forty-four one A is one such devil. This is a new regulation forty-four A rather. So you have not explained to the public what you need to address. And now you propose to, propose this at the bills committee. You haven't got clear grounds. And then you try to make the court to be the gatekeeper. But it's not desirable to do it that way. Now, if this amendment is passed, I hope at least there will be clear and specific codes to say that the search should not be carried out unless it's absolutely necessary. There shouldn't be such wide powers for inspectors so they could just enter premises just because they suspect liquor is being sold to minors. And that will undermine the privacy of the public, so I speak. Mr. Ray Chan, I think this is a brilliant debate here. In the history of this council, this should become, you know, something to teach about the history of debate in this council. Now, Tommy Chong said that the government shouldn't just count enough votes because the devil is in the details. And Holden Chow said proportionality and necessity are important where there is any provision in the law. Now, so this shows that because here we're talking about livelihood issues, there is no political science. We're just focusing on the bill and the relevant provisions to see whether there are need for them. And then we will decide whether we support it. Now, for clause seven, it covers two important subjects. The first one. For delivery of liquor to minors who purchase liquor. Now, if someone is responsible for the delivery, should he be held to criminally liable? The government say that if the persons are employed by the seller-supplier of liquor, for example, he's a staff member of a delivery company or courier, then he doesn't have to be held criminally liable. So that's why we're regulation thirty-seven. Prohibition against sale and supply of intoxicating liquor to minors. And then one A is added, which, and that says, if in the course of business, a person delivers liquor on behalf of others and that person is not involved in the sale or supply of liquor, then he will not be held criminally liable just because he's responsible for deliveries. So put it the other way. If someone is responsible for delivering liquor, and he is employed by the seller of liquor, or if the seller of liquor delivers the liquor himself, and then he hands over the liquor products to someone under the age of eighteen, then it's possible he has committed an offense. So this is very dangerous. It's probably difficult to enforce. In the last debate, now here we're talking about placing an order in advance, and then a delivery is made to the purchaser at his home. Now, if the person doing the delivery is a courier, he is not criminally liable. But what if he is delivery staff of a supermarket? So he's directly employed by the supermarket? Or he is a staff member of the online shop? Then does he have to check the ID card of the recipient of the delivery before he leaves behind this parcel containing liquor products? Now, there are many ways to receive a delivery. You know, like for supermarket deliveries, sometimes you can just leave them at the management office or even just outside your door. And for pet goods, I just found out yesterday, there's a pet shop that could deliver pets' products to your place outside, just, and they leave it outside the door, and then you can pay later. So when this bill is passed into law, does it mean that if in that parcel there is liquor, then the person responsible for making the delivery will have to check the ID card of the recipient? And he has to check that in the ID card, the person is aged eighteen above. Only then he will be exempted from criminal liability. Now, for online shopping, there's already a declaration system. That is, you take that you are over eighteen years of old. Doesn't matter whether the person is receiving, the operator. But in the law, there is this question, and you answer yes already. That's a defense. Of course, the person may take, yes, he's over eighteen, but he's lying. But then at that point, there's no need to ask to check ID card. Now, then, when it comes to delivery, even if I'm doing the delivery myself, how come then I have this responsibility to do so? It's like you buy from a supermarket. I just buy, but I ask someone to pay for it. And then the goods are delivered, and then in that, among the goods, there's liquor. Or put it the other way, are you going to do undercover operation or test purchase? Let's say, you go to the website and you see there is not this declaration, there is not a place for you to take that you're over eighteen before they allow you to place an order. Now, if that's the case. Now, if a person takes the column that he's under eighteen and you still allow him to make, place orders, of course, you are in trouble. But otherwise, if you wait till it's the delivery process, and then you try to hold someone criminally liable, that could present a problem. Now, let's say it's a delivery lady from the supermarket. She may be under risk. But then there's no way we don't, we can't, we don't support this clause. We're just saying that it's giving exception to people involved in deliveries, say from the couriers and so on. But then, if the person is somehow related to the seller of liquor, now how are you going to educate shops or supermarkets? When they do the deliveries, do they have to do checking at that stage? I think the government needs to educate them, or you just turn a blind eye to it. And you said, as long as on the website, there's place for people to take and declare he's over eighteen, then you have no responsibility. Now, I don't know if the government has enough votes. I'm helping the government count votes. If you're just counting those present here, then there are not enough votes to pass forty-four, a new regulation forty-four A. That is, if a magistrate is satisfied by information unknown by an inspector that there are reasonable grounds for suspecting that there is within domestic premises, anything that is or is likely to be evidence of an offense, the magistrate may issue a search warrant. Now, I'm sincere in what I'm going to say about Mr. Holden Chow. You know, when you talk about police powers, and not just police powers, the powers of any enforcement officers. How much powers do they have? Is there any limit? I'm not saying whether they're going to abuse powers, but rather, when we empower the enforcement officers, so we give them this tool, this weapon, or this channel for them to do something. So here, proportionality is very important. So I totally agree with Mr. Holden Chow about what he said. Now, because, you know, when it comes to political issues, the establishment may say, well, no, don't worry. Even if there's basement or cellar, it's not a problem. So don't worry, and then they have to go to court, and the judge will have to allow it, even if judge allows it. So what's there to be afraid about? No, we're not talking about that. Now, the inspectors may say, you know, you have so much wine, you can't finish drinking it, even if you have ten lives, like Henry Ten, for example. So are you selling the wine? Or, but then I might say, I would just get away. Anyway, there must be the magistrate to issue a search warrant for law enforcement agents to enter and search premises. But it's very difficult to get a search warrant, because the inspector needs only to satisfy the magistrate that there is anything that is or is likely to be evidence of an offense. So the inspector, if he has reasonable grounds to suspect, then he could get a search warrant. I would expect the success rate to be high in applying for a search warrant. Otherwise, you would complain against the inspector that he is too casual in going to the magistrate. Now, for this bill, which is about online selling of liquor to minors.
As long as an inspector sees that someone is selling liquor online or he suspects that the person is selling liquor to minors online, probably he will do it by way of covert operation. probably he will do it by way of covert operation. Now, I don't think, if you see nothing online, and of course, if you want to cheat them, you can call up and say, I am a minor, when there is direct selling. Well, I don't think there are people who dare do that. And of course, in such cases, you don't really have to arrest him. To be exact, any domestic premises with a lot of liquor may become the target of such searches. From my angle, from people in the democratic or human rights camp, if it is not necessary, if it is not proportionate, we'd rather not give you the extra weapon, so we don't have controversy. Mr. Tommy Chiang puts it very nicely, you should not sell any liquor at home, not to mention you sell to a minor. Existing laws can already deal with this. Why do you want to incorporate forty-four A into the bill? Well, I would suspect that the administration's mindset is like this. It is changing public places to distribution points, and distribution points cannot include domestic premises. And they think this is a loophole, so they want to pluck it. And that is why they are proposing this amendment. In fact, there is something I don't understand. First of all, we'll vote on the first group of amendments. I believe members will support that, because that is to exclude delivery workers. Sorry, I'm tripping. So they are not liable. But uh, of course, in the first group, it includes the definition of domestic premises. And the second group of amendments is about search of domestic premises. And the legislative council has told us that we will vote on the first group first. And whether or not the first group is um, approved, we can still vote on the second group. But then, the first group will also include the definition of domestic premises. Without that, how can we vote on the second group? Anyway, I think we will support the first group because we are trying to protect the delivery workers that who should not be made liable. If there is this liability, the courier companies will not want to deliver liquor. Because you will have to show the invoice and ask the person for proof of identity. That is a sheer nonsense. However, about the second group, I hope members, uh, no matter what your political affiliation is, after you have listened to Holden Chow and Tommy Chiang, well, you don't have to listen to me. Looking from the angles of necessity and proportionality, I don't think it's needed. In private, pro-establishment camp members were telling me that it would not be feasible either. Uh, either you have the books, like people who engage in illegal gambling activities, and also the user record, et cetera. That may allow you to get any evidence. But then if I were these people, I would separate the computer, the money, and the wine. You may come up to see I have a few um, caskets of wine, but it doesn't mean anything. And then proportionality, this is not a serious crime. Well, drug trafficking, and also the sale of um, banned medicine, that would be serious. You, you can tackle this with other pieces of legislation without this power to search domestic premises. I hope the administration will think again. Without the second group of amendments, I believe um, the administration should still find it acceptable. I urge members not to support the second group of amendments. Mr. Shou Kaffai.
Thank you. Chairman, in the last debate, I already said that issues relating to tobacco and drinking are regarded to be harmful by people who stand on high moral grounds. But in Hong Kong, we have freedom. Before these products are banned, Hong Kong people should have a choice. If the administration takes strict measures, say by increasing taxes, that would not be supported by us. The bill is about not selling liquor to minors. Even if I represent the retail and wholesale sector, and after consulting wine sellers in the trade, nobody said that they objected to what the administration is doing. Because selling liquor to minors will have a negative effect on their health, because young people may not have very much self-control. Therefore, my sector and I support the bill, but as I said, I like to mention some provisions in the bill with the administration. Um, there may be pressure on frontline staff. You will have to enforce the law, and you will have to make sure that frontliners do not sell liquor to minors. That will bring some pressure to be borne by frontliners. During the scrutiny of the bill, I already mentioned that to the bureau, and you told me that this is similar to the tobacco control legislation. However, I want to point out that they are different. You may legislate in a similar way, but when frontliners do not sell tobacco to minors, the frontliners will say, I think you are a minor, and I like to see your proof of identity. And then the customer may just go away. However, if someone comes in to buy liquor, well, if they are nine or ten years old, it's all right. But if they are seventeen or eighteen years of age, and they are quite largely built, and if they have already drunk some liquor, still you ask for them, for a proof of identity from them, well, that is different from someone who is buying tobacco. Because people who smoke will not get drunk, and uh, this may pose more risk on frontliners. Well, of course, we have to do it. We agree that minors should not have liquor sold to them. You will be providing prescribed notices, but you should mount more publicity on different media. You know, the media don't have a lot of advertising income, and since you have so much money in the coffers, government coffers, please take out more APIs in the papers, on radio, and on television, so as to minimize disputes. Also, like to mention that supposing frontliners indeed sell liquor to minors, um, because they did not, do not do a good job checking the identity, they may be prosecuted. But what about the one purchasing the liquor? Actually, at the Hong Kong Retail Management Association, they cited the example. In overseas countries, even the seller will be penalized, knowing that it is a minor, and you still sell liquor to him, then you should, or you, knowing that it is a minor, and still the minor purchases alcohol, he should be um, penalized. And even if a proof of identity is shown, the identity may be fake. So minors who buy liquor and go to casinos should also bear some responsibility. Also, grocery stores may be selling rice wine for cooking. It is included in the bill, but this is not known to many people of the public. And when you do your publicity, you should have prescribed notices at supermarkets, but you should also provide one to the grocery store. The mother may be cooking, and then she may ask her teenage child to buy rice wine, and this will be caught. Please mount effective publicity to tell the people of Hong Kong what is happening. About remote distribution, which is online selling, I like to say thank you to the bureau. We gave you many views during the scrutiny, and you have taken on board some of our views. Because some people may buy online, and now you agree that that can be the checking of a box on the website, and it will be a defense. And then, at the beginning, you said that no matter who is doing the delivery, and that person will have to assist in the investigation. We already said that we won't agree, because if it is the liquor company sending somebody to um, deliver the wine, then it's all right. But if you ask a courier to do it, and the courier asking for proof of identity will be a very much objected to. Now, you are redefining agent, you are saying that only those directly employed by the liquor company will be caught. And couriers will not be included. We welcome that. We think it's okay. I also like to mention that even if only employees of the liquor companies are included, I hope the bureau will keep a watchful eye. Will there still be disputes upon delivery? Because when people come to buy from shops, and the prescribed notice is there, everything would be clear. But then, um, there may be disputes at delivery. If that is the case, please, uh, watch out and propose further amendments. Dr. KK Quoc is here, well, during the scrutiny of the bill. Dr. Quoc has been very mindful about health of the minors, and he proposed that the proof of identity and also it should be coupled with the use of a principal credit card before online selling is, or should be allowed. I can't agree. If you ask for proof of identity, even if it is a copy, there will be privacy concerns. The RMA also had that concern, and it asked the sector, because the identity could be um, transmitted to other places. And secondly, the principal credit card saying that that would be evidence that that person is not a minor, but even a bank will issue a supplementary card to a minor, so this doesn't work. As for the powers of the inspector in gathering evidence, with regard to the entry into shops and business premises, I hope they will not do it without um, reason, because it will affect people's business. Not talking about convenience stores, because they always have their doors open. But what about wine sellers which sell really expensive wine? You have to pay attention. If a notice is already seen on the glass door, you should not disturb them. Lastly, uh, in search of domestic premises, this morning, your colleagues lobbied me to support the bill. They had a point. But I think the bills committee chairman also had a point about domestic premises. It is always illegal to sell liquor in domestic premises, right? But now you can seek a warrant and search domestic premises. Would that amount to any infringement? I have reservations about that. It depends whether you can explain yourself well and convince me, or else I would not support it. It is now seven thirty. I believe we will not be able to complete the scrutiny of the bill tonight. I now adjourn the council until nine AM tomorrow.